I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everyone have the opportunity to review the minutes of September 6, 2022, and September 12, 2022.
Yes, and I'd like to table the September 6, 2022 minutes so we can look at them again. But I make a motion to approve this September 12, 2022 minutes.
I'll set it.
Almost finished out?
Aye.
So you're setting.
And I'll make that change here.
Okay. Audience call. If you don't mind, just go up here, state your name, and don't be shy.
Yeah, I'm who started this. We're, I'm Debbie Sellers.
I'm Deanie.
She lives at 180 Share Drive. And before school and after school is an issue with people picking up their kids. And what was it about three weeks ago? There was one lady stopped right in front of the stop sign on the road, and I honked a couple times and she wouldn't move. So I got out, and asked her what she was doing. Well, she's there to pick up a kid. She said that school told her to. I called the school, and they're supposed to turn it over to the administrator. And she said that they would not have told anybody to have parked over there to pick up their kid. And asked me if I knew who told her, and I said, no. But it's always an ongoing problem, and has been for years, you know.
Is it an ongoing problem on Locust or on Sharon Austin?
On Sharon. On Sharon and Locust, and it happens also during sectional time, too. I mean, they're parked on both sides of the street, you know, they're parking in people's yards. I talked to the two guys that live in the house at the end of Locust Street by the gate, by the school, and he said that morning times is really an issue for them. He said they've had to drive out through their yard because they couldn't get out their driveway because they were parked all the way up to the gate.
In the morning?
Just anytime. But mostly in the morning, and he said, you know, that's, they need to get out to go to work, and they shouldn't have to drive through your yard. Her neighbor actually has a thing across the driveway now because she had a sign, and the sign didn't work. She had a whole sign out there saying, no turnaround. She don't want everybody turning around in her driveway because it's dead end back there. And the sign didn't work, so now she's got a caution tape across the end of her driveway. So, you know, every time she comes and goes, she has to get out and lower that and put it back up when she leaves. But the guys at the end of Locust said, you know, they're parking up in their yard enough that it's killing part of their yard.
Scott, we've got plenty of no parking signs.
Yeah?
Well, how close are they allowed to stop or park in front of a stop sign?
They're not.
Very well, they're right up to the stop sign.
I talked to Max.
Yeah, the younger one, tall?
Yeah, and he said the only thing that they could do is patrol back there, and if they were parked in front of the stop sign, they could make a move. But if they were parked in front of somebody's house or driveway, they can't make a move because he said they may be visiting that house, which I know is, you know, you know what times it, they're all going to be parking back there, so you know they're not visiting those houses.
Well, there's also, at times, they have parked on both sides of the street down toward the end, and if someone had to get out or an emergency vehicle had to get in, there wouldn't be no way, you know, they would have to move a lot of people to get to where they're going.
Yeah. Those two were not on our original list.
So it's not on our?
No. I checked. I checked.
So we need to add those to our ordinance, put up some no parking signs, and enforce it?
I'm gonna do that on all the streets by the schools.
Yeah.
Where they gonna stop? They're going full.
Well, they're parking across the school.
I mean, I suppose if somebody from the subdivision came and complained to us, we'd have to do something.
Yeah, but even with.
These people are complaining about it.
Even with the no parking sign, we said they can park temporarily.
In the mornings, they should just be letting them off.
They should, yeah, they shouldn't be parking.
Well, but some, you know, in the evenings, they get there, what, about 3:00 or something, and they sit there, and they will not move their cars until that said kid is in their car and they leave. Doesn't matter what's going on in front of them or behind them, and you can't get them to move. And then they come off with saying, well, you know, the school told me that I could park my car or pick up my kid here and drop her off. And the school's saying, no, they didn't say that, so.
I think we need to do a little bit more investigating on what we can and can't do.
Yeah, because, I mean, as long as they're not blocking driveways or roads.
Well, but they have occasionally blocked the road.
Well, I mean, that's, that would be an issue, but.
Well, and they're parking in the edge of people's yards and.
Yeah, I mean, if they're on the edge of the road and a vehicle can get through, I'm not for sure that you can do it.
Well, how far does the town's right of way go from the middle of the road to here?
Every street varies. I mean, some streets are just right at the edge of the road. State highway is different. I mean, it just depends on which street you're talking about. That one there, our right of way, would probably, it might go up in the yard, maybe three or four feet.
Well, I was told there was eight foot from the middle into the yard.
In the middle of the road?
Uh huh.
Eight foot?
Mm-hmm.
That's a 20-foot road or 22-foot road, so eight.
Well, it's just, you know, there's a few older people back there.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of young kids, too.
Oh, I see, I see what you mean. I just.
Well, and somebody brought up the fact that there is a couple elderly people that the ambulance has come back there for, and if it were to happen during those times, then they.
Yeah, they shouldn't be on both sides of the road. I agree.
I mean, they're parked everywhere.
Yeah.
Maybe we need to talk to the school.
Yeah, I've already got everything down.
Yeah.
I'll definitely call them.
Instead of, because the no parking sign, the ordinance we passed, you can park there temporarily, like if you're at a birthday party or you're having a family reunion.
Well, that's probably what they're going by.
Yeah, so that's, isn't that right? You wouldn't ticket somebody if.
No.
Or you wouldn't ask them to move.
Right, correct.
So we need to talk to the school.
Well, maybe they could be a little more organized about it and observe that we are, it's a dead end street, too.
That's right, that's right.
When they block it, you can't get in or out, you know.
I, yeah, I understand.
I see Kathy shaking her head because I know where she lives.
Well, you know, I can sit there in the morning, like you say, they just drop them off, but it's zoom, zoom, zoom. They go down to the little end there and turn around and come back.
Keeps them out of all the traffic.
Yeah. Well, her street goes down and it circles out in Sharon Court. These people won't even go down there to the end of Sharon Drive and turn around. They're using people's yards and driveways, whatever. You know, they can't even go all the way down in the circle. Might take them a couple more minutes, but, you know.
I think we need to talk to the school.
I'll talk to Jeff tomorrow.
Yeah.
But, I mean, again, the schools are probably not, they really don't have anything that they can do, but I think that we need to have a little bit more discussion.
That's right.
Well, I don't understand, you know, they got all them teachers, why can't they post a teacher down past that stop sign and, you know, get people to move on if they know they're there to pick up kids, you know?
Pick them up and go.
Yeah. Like she said, in the morning, there's one car that they must wait till just two minutes before the bell rings for their kids to get out of the car, and she said, you know, kids don't get out till, so the car sits there all that time. It's like, you know, drop them off and go.
Sure, sure.
Well, with that being a dead end street, would that have anything to do with anything?
I don't think so.
No.
Yeah, it's just like, it's just like any street over here, I'd say.
Yeah.
Okay.
You'll talk to the school.
I'll talk to the school tomorrow, and we'll have more discussion on it, and if we feel like we can maybe put some signs up and have them traffic it a little bit more during that time, and I'm not saying we want to get them off the street, but at least let the people know that, and it's the same people every day.
Right.
Let them know they need to do this and they need to.
I'm sure at the beginning of each school year, some have changed because the graduate wave left, but still, you know, even during sectional time, they're parked everywhere.
Yeah, you're on your own there. Yeah, whether it's 3,500 in the gym or 4,000.
Right. Well, it wouldn't be so bad if they parked down one side, but they're parked everywhere.
Yeah, I understand. I do understand that.
Where do they park when you have like a yard sale down through there?
We don't have a yard sale.
They don't, I don't think there's been a yard sale down there for a long time.
Yeah, there was this summer down there.
Oh, was there?
Yeah, down on the circle, but.
That was down in the circle?
Yeah, there wasn't much traffic.
Not at fire.
Okay, we'll see what we can do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Shane?
It's me. Oh, this is better looking. Yeah. Just wanted to come and report that we were able to use the cameras and identify the people that were messing with the camera system here in the park. We've got those juveniles on house arrest, making lots of drug arrests, just staying busy.
Do we have any idea where we're gonna need some cameras up at Rainbow?
We have it through this air.
There's a lot of them.
Okay. They were telling me that there's side by sides, there's motorcycles, there's cars, everything traveling that cycle.
There's broken glass.
There was broken glass there.
Yes.
When I drove through there.
But we have, in addition to the ARP money, we have to get electricity back there.
Any complaints or anything?
Thanks so much, bud.
Thank you, guys. You have your new reserve, did you just want your new reserves?
This is Cameron Alwerson. He's been on our department for a couple months now.
Nice to meet you.
He has as well.
So far, so good?
Awesome.
Good.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Scott?
Well, we've been working on parks, so we've got Rainbow pretty good. We got playground built. We've run out of railroad ties, but I think we got some coming, maybe.
Did you contact her?
I couldn't get a hold of her. I told Scott today.
Okay.
There's been kids over at that park every day I've drove through.
Do I?
There's been kids over there.
There was little kids waiting, when are you gonna have it done? So we've gotta sow some grass and stuff and then put curbing or something so they don't drive in there, and I think what we gotta do, the basketball, we're gonna do the basketball court.
You want to get it cleaned up.
Yeah, just take the jetter over and hose it off. And then tomorrow, we're gonna go ahead and get ready to pour a bunch of pads for benches.
So we get those three benches out.
And we might go ahead and pour some, I'll just order a truck to see that.
Yeah, pour more.
And we're gonna maybe go out and pick some spots. But that's just about what we've been doing on the hill, just working on playground equipment for the last two weeks, but I think Eddie's got some stuff going on with the plant. I'll let him talk about that.
You ever got a quote for the finishing all the building, the plant? That's all of it, that'd be done. The deck is finished, and I brought some pictures. Couple pictures are, it's also a fence progress, so they're about halfway done. So.
Did you bring pictures of your loader rooms?
No.
So you, okay. Explain to them what the.
Yeah, the two blue buildings at the bottom and the center of the plant, and the red brick building, they'll pour in. That's including that and the complete roof over all those.
They're flat?
Metal.
Yeah, individual buildings.
This right here?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll make it look like one big long building.
Eddie's putting metal on everything but the brick building, too.
Yeah, we're gonna finish out the belt press room, the office, they're gonna change all the soffit, get rid of the brown, make it white, so everything's green, white, and but that's, yeah, that's everything will be completed.
Scott, where are we on the fence down there?
About halfway done.
Good.
They got the bottom along the creek done, they want us to deal with it, they got both in, and now they gotta go across the top.
They got the poles on all the way around them, right?
Except up at the top.
Except for the top, okay.
I bet it looks good. We got pictures of it right here.
Yeah, I got it. But that's all I have.
So 13,371,40, and that was finish everything out?
Mm-hmm. It's all good, and you go break the paper.
That's awesome.
All nice.
Good, great.
Thanks, Evan.
Yeah.
On these benches, do we know who's good at the package form yet?
Already got.
You've got Woods.
I never knew anything about Woods.
Is this one right here?
No, I'm just saying, I never knew anything about what was supposed to be on it or anything because I didn't have anything to do with that bench.
When we put it in, the family was supposed to get it.
Yeah, they were gonna do it.
I called Kevin and asked him, and he said, I don't know anything about it.
It was the one daughter of the young woman.
Denise?
Yeah, she was taken care of.
Find out what he wants it to say, Kenny.
In memory of Paul McDonald Wood.
Just text that to me if you don't mind, just so I have it. I can order one, because I've got to order, the seniors got a bench, Tanny Hagmeyer got a bench, and then someone else I felt like got a bench and wanted a bench. Oh, I know, yeah, yeah. So we already have three more benches to put out, so I gotta order three more plaques. So if I, give me the, just put that in there, exactly how it's supposed to read, and I'll make sure you get it.
13,000.
Anybody have anything else for Scott already?
8:30 tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
I drove over to the park yesterday, it looks great.
Yes, kids.
It really does.
I think we put a couple soccer, soccer goals out there in the grass and.
Yeah, we could do that. We kept those, I don't know if you noticed, but on the south side of the shelter house, we hauled three dump truck loads of trimmings out. We took those pine or cedar trees and cut them up about six foot because they were hiding behind it, and moving picnic tables back here. It's all opened up now.
We desperately need to get some cameras up over there as soon as we can because it does us no good with the new equipment if they don't tear it all up.
I've got, Duke Energy's gonna look at putting three security lights up over there and hoping to piggyback off of that electric service and see if we can, because then we gotta, the next piece of that puzzle is, we've also gotta build a little room, big enough to hold the modem. Everything, we gotta have internet, gotta have everything, so just having that.
Yeah.
And then it's gotta be on camera so that you can see it as clearly as you can see back here.
Lot to it.
There's a lot to it.
Keith, you're up.
That's a start, what I was gonna say, just working towards that. I've been working on that with the lighting. They're getting ready to start in October to switch it over. These are just things that are still lingering from my town administrator, so we're sharing that with you. Something else that came to my mind, or came to our plate yesterday afternoon late, and I just shared it with Scott briefly. I think there's an interim fix that we can do. It's gonna cost a little bit of money, but I think it's almost mandatory if we do it. The light poles back here on Field 3, we've been working on those to try to get them, the lights that you guys approved last year to put them up. Field looks great. The problem is, we've got one light pole that's virtually rotted in half at the bottom. So from a safety perspective, I, there's two poles we need to replace. I priced the 40-foot, 4-inch or 6-inch steel poles like that we're projecting to use in our next phase of our project for the DNR. They're about $2,100 a piece. I don't know if, you know.
Set tall enough?
40 foot's what the lighting diagram was created for the lumen chart that they used when they did our lights. So the poles that are out there right now are about 50 feet. So we talked about, Mike Clicklighter and Kenny Dagger talked about maybe putting a cemented concrete tube up about three or four feet and then starting a light pole above the ground that much, add maybe 44 feet or so tall. But I highly recommend that we order two light poles as soon as possible.
They have activity October 1st.
Yeah, and well, so in the meantime, the one, Mike said he didn't feel as terrible about, but the one in the outfield, what I suggested to Scott was we could maybe TNT would rent us their low-haul or big high lift unit, that we could actually park out there behind it with a fork to brace it and secure it to it until we got a pole fixed. You know, maybe we could get one of the power companies to go put a pole, I don't know. If you don't wanna buy, I don't know if somebody would be trying to come do something in the meantime, but we need to do something to secure that pole.
How much are they at these? $2,100.
$2,100.
Do we have the money?
Well, I mean, I think we gotta find it. I mean, we could find it.
Do you have our donations, can't we?
We could.
Yeah.
We probably would just talk to the donors, and I'm sure they wouldn't have an issue with doing something like that. That's what it was designed for.
We need to.
Need to, to be safe. So you're probably talking all in expense, concrete bolts, minor electrical upgrade to a couple spots, you're probably looking at.
Six.
$6,000, I'd say, yeah. Maybe seven at the most, but for two lights, two poles.
You gotta help.
We have no choice at this moment, in my opinion.
Do you wanna contact a donor and see if it's okay?
I will.
How long does it take to get the poles?
That's the great question. They say, they say they're in stock, so.
So we don't meet for two more weeks, should we?
We actually meet next week.
Well, next week, but should we pass something before then so you can get them ordered?
If you guys want to approve that, I could go ahead and do that as long, subject to that, it's up to you all.
I don't like to approve anything without consent.
No, I'm saying with consent.
Okay, okay.
As long as that's done, I'll report back to you guys, let you know that they consent. If you all want to.
And if they don't consent, you don't do it.
No, I mean, or if you wanna just wait that week, let me go ahead, you can give me the approval to go ahead and get a piece of equipment to secure the existing pole now and then get that blessing.
And that needs to be secured.
And then next week, you guys can approve the purchase of the donor approval.
Sounds good.
Is that all right, you guys?
Yeah.
Okay. So what I would need is approval to rent the equipment to stabilize that pole.
I'll make a motion to rent the equipment to stabilize the pole in the park.
Any discussion? Christopher Saff.
Aye.
All right. Other than that, everything else is going well. We've had to make a couple changes. One thing I wanna bring up now, based on the minutes and just different things, we've started using, you guys approved Mike Clicklighter and Kenny Dagger to help us in the park part-time. It's working out great. They've done a ton of electrical upgrades already. It's just massive for what we've accomplished along with them, for that kind of money. So we'll, there will be some appropriation changes in our lip fund because we're paying them through our, you know, seasonal employee, so we'll have to make those changes. And the way we're doing it, I just wanted to clear up with you guys here, the way we're planning to do that is, if you turn to your 277 page, park other supplies is 277240, and then we park buildings, 277361. If we were to be doing these projects and hiring a contractor to come in and perform this work, we would pay for them as a contractor through that, through those two funds. So what we're doing is, we're gonna move some funds from those for materials and labor, basically, for our employee to be able to pay them through that. So I wanna make sure you guys were aware of that and had no problem with doing it that way. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yes.
So we would do a combination of materials and labor through park other supplies and park buildings, transfer that into seasonal park employees, all in the same fund, and pay them out of there, which is 277113, the very first item on page five. So you're looking at page five and six would be your spot.
Right.
When my time was going on, you guys can help remind people how that was happening.
Yes. I'm gonna put it in writing through the minutes. So we will remember.
There you go.
Any other old business? I'm sorry, anything more key? You sitting here, do you guys have anything?
We'll talk to Matt tomorrow, first meeting tomorrow.
Old Business Website, I think Scott did say, asked them today, they have two more training sessions left, and they'll be done, and we'll be opening up that website soon, so that's ARP money.
We could take that for just a second, Kenny, if you want. The last meetings that we had, and we kinda divvied things out, Devin had sent, I think, the start of the paperwork that gave us a good start, good understanding how we need to word it, how we need to do it. Kim and I's been working on that. I actually met with Triva and Debbie due to another, that other idea on the pay for the park employees. But anyhow, I brought up to them that we were gonna table that, give Devin till next week, that we need to get that paperwork to him to do it. And in the light of last night's conversation with our stormwater study money that we set aside, we'll wanna re-discuss where we wanna probably put that $20,000 since we're not gonna be appropriating it towards that. We'll need to talk about that. And then also, you guys probably, unless we have the time to do a work session between now and then, we will wanna decide the verbiage. We talked about earmarking some money for some things that we think we would wanna do, and so we wanted to discuss with Devin how that would look. So $647,000 that we have, if we've spent roughly 350 of it, or we, we haven't spent it, but we're projecting where we would spend that, that remaining $250,000, those numbers don't add up, I'm gonna beat counter, they're supposed to, but the point is, the remaining $300,000 or so, we wanted to earmark for things that we might wanna do. Do you put that in there, or do you just leave that out and it doesn't show your completely exhaustive money? Does that make sense?
Um.
Because we don't, we're not saying we're committing to those expenditures.
So the, when the city did this, they had to amend their plan later, and I don't think there's any problem with that. I think you could mark it, and I don't wanna say earmark, but there's probably a word we can come up with.
So what we wanna do is, we're tight watch, so we wanna make sure, we're physically responsible to say, we don't wanna pay you again to amend it if we follow through and do that, Devin. We wanna make sure that we don't have to pay you.
Maybe Devin doesn't want us to do this.
So what's your advice?
That's what your advice is.
That's how I expected you to say there.
My point is, we wanna put it in there, we think that's something we would like to do with the money. We obviously didn't just pull out of the sky, we thought about it long and hard.
Yeah.
But if we don't do it, we could amend it.
Yeah.
But if we don't spend it that way, there's nothing wrong with that. We just, right, if we do, it works, if we don't, it's no big deal. So even though we put this in this, we can still have a change of harvest any point in time until we spend it.
Correct.
Okay?
That's a good idea right there.
So you could help us orchestrate that, then?
Yep.
Okay.
We appreciate it.
Thanks, that's good. So expensive.
Yeah, you're killing us. So next week, we will have that put together. You guys just gotta think quickly on the twenty thousand dollars that was originally going to be paid for a stormwater study. We were recommended last night to not do that and save that for our master plan, so. If you know, you can tell me now. If you wanna wait, go a different direction. Time is of the essence. We're gonna put it together for next week.
Well, as I said at our first meeting, ARP meeting, if we don't get the grant for the master plan, if we're gonna do one, we've gotta have money for it. Can we set aside?
That money for that?
That money for that. If we're gonna do a master plan and we don't get the grant, are we gonna wait and apply for the grant again next year? I don't know.
Wanna think about it and...
I mean, I think I would like to move forward with it.
I do too, but we gotta have money.
Right.
To do it. And, you know, twenty thousand probably be half of it.
That's what you're asking, so is it?
But I'm good with that.
Okay.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
All right, so that's what we'll do.
Yeah, we're too far along not to move forward.
Yeah, I mean, if we get the grant, great, but if we don't, I feel we need to move forward with everything that's going on.
The momentum's there.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds great. I'll change that to that, and we'll have it ready for approval next Tuesday. Appreciate it.
Second reading for ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eleven, amending the water rates without the URT. Just by reading the title, if that's okay. Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash eleven, norm and amending rates and charges for the use and services rendered by the water, which is in Hanover. This was to remove the one fee.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Those may have public comments. Is there any public comments? Don't wish to say it.
I know.
Now you go.
I make a motion.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All's in favor of that?
Aye.
Any other old business? Do we know where we're at with the paperwork from McAllister?
Did you sign it?
Mm-hmm.
It's been delivered to the courthouse with your college.
I signed it. It's there.
Okay. I'll find out tomorrow. This is old business, you may ask.
Any other old business? New business? Actually, no, the ordinance review up there. Resolution for five-year master plan.
Resolution authorizing application submission of local match amendment. Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Hanover authorizing the submit of the CDBG planning grant application to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs and addressing related matters. Whereas the Council of the Town of Hanover recognizes the need to stimulate growth and to maintain a sound economy within its corporate limits. And whereas the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four authorizes the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs to provide grants to local units of government to meet the housing and community development needs of low and moderate income persons and/or the elimination of light. Whereas the Town of Hanover has conducted or will conduct public hearings prior to the submission of an application to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs and said public hearings to assess the housing, public facilities, and economic needs of its low and moderate income residents. Now therefore be a result by the Town Council of the Town of Hanover, Indiana. That one, the Town Council President is authorized to prepare and submit an application for grant funding to address completion of a comprehensive plan and to execute and administer a resultant grant, including requisite general administration and project management contracts and agreements pursuant to regulations of the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs and the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Two, the Town of Hanover hereby commits the requisite local funds in the amount of five thousand six hundred dollars in the form of general funds as matching funds for said program. Such commitment to be contingent upon receipt of CDBG funding from the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs.
Is that the first reading? Do we need to approve the first reading?
No, that's a resolution. You can pass that up on first.
Okay. I make a motion to... We don't, we don't need a motion?
I know, I didn't know if there was a number on it.
Oh.
I didn't see a number.
I didn't either. So I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the five-year master plan.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor of that?
Aye.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve, amending compensation ordinance.
This was to address some newly created positions. So the Town Council of the Town of Hanover, Indiana, must establish compensation of officials and employees. The Town Council must amend, must be amended. Compensation ordinance from twenty twenty-one dash eighteen to include newly created positions and updated pay structures for certain positions. None new appropriation will result from such compensation. Town Council desires to amend the way in which certain employees pay structure and add new job classifications. Now therefore be redone by the Town Council. The compensation of the employees of the Town of Hanover effective, assuming immediately and continuing until otherwise redone by the Town Council, subject to laws governing the same, shall be as listed below. The Town Council shall specify particular salaries and hourly rates for individual employees on the basis of factors including, but not limited to, experience, training, certifications received, demonstrated ability, past job performance, and available funds. Job classifications that are being created. Event coordinator for the parks department, parks maintenance, groundskeeper, wastewater plant operator, and parks electrical workers or laborers up to two. For the event coordinator, sixteen dollars an hour to eighteen dollars an hour is the range. Parks maintenance, groundskeeper, twelve dollars to eighteen dollars an hour. Wastewater plant operator, fifteen dollars to twenty-five dollars an hour. Parks electrical workers, laborers, is fifteen dollars an hour to twenty dollars an hour. And the electrical worker or laborers, the difference there is that they'll be paid on a monthly basis rather than on a weekly basis like everybody else. All hourly salary employees not otherwise mentioned above shall be paid on a weekly basis according to the pay rate previously approved. Scheduled compensation employees who work involves service within one or more departments shall be charged those departments in proportion to the amount of time spent working in each department as estimated by the department in conjunction with declared treasure. Commensatory time shall be charged to the department for which the overtime was earned. All other ordinances, resolutions, or parts thereof in conflict with the provisions of the intent of this ordinance are repealed. It is the intention of the Town Council that this ordinance be in addition to the previously passed compensation ordinances. Provisions of this ordinance are separable, and if a court of common jurisdiction declares any portion of this ordinance unconstitutional and valid or unforcible for any reason such that declaration shall not affect the remaining portions of the ordinance. Shall be effective on its assets today.
Motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash twelve, amending compensation.
I'll second.
You send that around for signature.
Any discussion? All's in favor of that?
Aye.
Thank you. Set a date for trick or treat?
Alquido and Madison did. They haven't decided yet. I just looked on their website. They're having a party October twenty-ninth. Then you can trick or treat at the campground that night, and it said public trick or treating to be announced. I just looked it up.
The thirty-first of that week.
So can we decide?
Next week.
Next Tuesday? And we see what, we usually go with what we have, so.
So we're gonna wait till next Tuesday?
And we put it on next week, so.
Everyone agree?
We'll check on it next week?
Yeah, yeah. In the meantime, we'll find out.
So we have big deeds, odd jobs with the metal on all the gable ends on the freestanding big storage farm with green pole worn metal, two flat sides. We'll have new metal as well. Two by twelve around the edge of the building will be wrapped with green metal. Total job cost is thirteen thousand three hundred seventy-one forty. All that would come out in the silver right up. Are we okay with this, foundation wise?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a good price, too.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the amount of thirteen thousand three hundred seventy-one forty to get this work done at this year.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All's in favor of that?
It'll look great.
Yeah.
One more thing that you guys might, Scott and I's received estimates from a few different people regarding the water meter installs. Got somebody that's ready to start on them. Of all the prices that came back, I'll have you the estimates in writing for next Tuesday's meeting. But the one, one in particular is quite a bit less than the others, it seems like, so. Can I rebuttal?
Yes. Be nice to get those done.
Yeah.
Any other new business? Okay, write-off final. Outstanding water and sewer trash accounts under two hundred dollars that have been past due for six months and are uncollectible. Ordinance twenty seventeen dash nineteen, authorizing the Hanover Town Council to write off. Outstanding water and trash accounts under two hundred dollars from August twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, through March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two is an amount of eight hundred twenty dollars and thirty-four cents.
Is this because people have moved out of town?
It's a combination of a lot of things, but yes, some of us, mostly all of us. Bad addresses returned. Now we got stacks of letters. I've tried to go through and reach out to handful of them before, because a couple of people on there I think would voluntarily pay, in my opinion, if we could show them that they owed it, so. But Linda's been churning out for a year and a half, two years in some cases.
Yeah.
The outstanding sewer accounts under two hundred from November twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, through March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and a total amount of one thousand three hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty cents, for a total of two thousand one hundred seventy-three dollars and fourteen cents.
So do we have a list that when people move back into the area and they try to?
Absolutely. Outstanding balances.
To where they can't, yeah.
Yeah, one, this is, this is gonna start eliminating, sorry, some of this is gonna go away now because we were late in raising our deposit. Now that our deposit's up, that would've corrected, the biggest part of these people would've been paid off through their deposit. But a lot of these people still have a hundred dollar deposit.
So you need...
Have a lot less of these.
You need a motion to write those off. I make a motion to write off two thousand one hundred seventy-three dollars and fourteen cents in water, trash, and sewer. Second.
Any more discussion? All's in favor of that?
Aye.
Okay, those are adjustments, accounts payable?
I make a motion to approve the accounts payable vouchers in the amount of one hundred and seventy-one thousand thirty dollars and sixty-five cents. I'll second.
All's in favor of that?
Aye.
Do you have anything else before announcements? Announcements, Hanover Park Board will meet Tuesday, October fourth, twenty twenty-two, at five thirty P.M. And Hanover Town Council meeting at six o'clock at the Hanover Community Center, two hundred Spruce Lane, four seven two four three. The party in the park is October fifteenth, from eleven to four o'clock. From four thirty to six thirty will be a candy handout for kids. And then at six thirty will be a costume contest for kids. Then following that, at seven thirty, right here at the park, we'll have a free movie. There will be drinks, popcorn for free for everyone. What'd you say the movie was?
Hotel Transylvania.
Hotel Transylvania. It's all free movie at seven thirty on October fifteenth. And the party in the park's from eleven to four. Four thirty to six thirty is candy handout right here at the building. And they call that Spooktacular. And then a costume contest at six thirty for kids will be prizes, and the movie's seven thirty. Anything else? Long day. Be good then.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All's in favor of that?
Aye.